Mayor said you have a lot of class. It's low. Mayor Croft was talking to Mike and he said you have a lot of class. It's low, but it's class. So I'm gonna use that. That was the funny joke of the day.
Six o'clock.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting, Tuesday, July 24, 2018, of the Chino Valley Town Council. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Kelly?
Present.
Councilman Miller?
Here.
Councilman Lane?
Here.
Councilman Mendoza?
Here.
Councilman Bass?
Here.
And Mayor Croft?
Here. All right, let's go on to introduction, presentations, and proclamations. Do we have anyone in the audience that is a Purple Heart recipient?
No.
Are you?
No.
Okay, we have no one. I'm gonna read a proclamation about Purple Heart Day, which is August 7, 2018. Whereas on August 7, 1782, General George Washington established the badge of military merit to honor enlisted soldiers of the Continental Army and was the first award made available to the common soldier to recognize outstanding valor or merit. Whereas today this honor is known as the Purple Heart. The Purple Heart is an American military decoration awarding in the name of the President of the United States to members of the armed forces wounded in combat or posthumously to the next of kin for those killed or who die of wounds received in action by an instrument of war in the hands of an enemy while serving. Approximately 1.8 million Purple Hearts have been awarded since 1932. And whereas through the unselfish acts of their bravery and sacrifices in preservation of the United States of America, national interests at home and abroad, our citizens and communities are afforded the ability to maintain their freedom and way of life. And whereas the Arizona State Legislature officially proclaims August 7 of each year as Purple Heart Day. And now therefore, I, Darryl Croft, Mayor of the Town of Chino Valley, do hereby acknowledge August 7, 2018, as Purple Heart Day in Chino Valley, Arizona, and urge all our citizens to recognize August 7 as Purple Heart Day and August 5 through 11 as Purple Heart Week in perpetuity to the properly honor all those who were killed in action or become wounded in defense of our country and remember that all gave some, some gave all. So if you realize or know someone that is a Purple Heart recipient, would you please recognize them during this period? And witness thereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Chino Valley to be affixed this 24th day of July, 2018. Thank you. The second, next item is Call to the Public. Call to the Public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for Call to the Public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Bud, why don't you come up and we'll go through, and I got three or four folks that want to speak, so.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
This is Mr. Bud Hanen, and he is with his staff.
Chino Valley Lions Club, Morning Lions Club. I have a proposal that I'd like to propose to the chamber. I would like to see you have a float in the parade and be the grand marshals, all of you. Do I have any questions?
Doesn't like, we have no choice. What, what's the theme of the parade?
It is, Chino Valley, our hometown.
Okay.
Or our hometown, Chino Valley.
Okay.
I've tried very hard this year. I think most of you know that Lee is the person that does this, and he's having a little difficulty. So I've taken this over, and I would like very much to get everybody in the town involved in this, because it just seems like the town is not involved in it. And therefore, that's, that's my proposal. Also.
Good, go ahead.
Your town manager over there has done a great job this year, and I would like to see her on this parade float.
Ha ha.
We hope that we can get her there, but she's a pretty independent person, so.
I have a.
Okay. Everybody agree that we do this?
We can't take any council, any action.
Agree? Okay.
I'll be there.
We'll be there.
Thank you very much.
We will do a float, too. I think we've already talked to our rec folks, I think the town manager has, so we will participate, and we'll try to get as many employees as we can to come.
Yeah, get some employees, like the town manager and her helpers and all that kind of stuff, and I'm sure you have helpers behind the scene that do a good job for you. Bring them out, we'd like to see them on the float.
We'll try to get as many town folks as we can, either on the float or walking in the street.
Okay, now, do you need help on a trailer?
No, I think we have enough people has trucks and trailers and.
You got enough trailers?
Yeah.
And somebody that'll drive it?
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate it, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, bud, we'll do that. Look forward to it. Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, council members. I'm Wayne Moir, I live at 1525 Bumblebee Drive. My property is right next to the Windmill subdivision. Several weeks ago, the planning and zoning meeting, they, they agreed that we should have a block wall to eliminate headlights and noise and whatever from the subdivision. This would extend from Road 4 to Bumblebee Drive, and then from that point, it would be all private properties, private lots. The area between 4 and Bumblebee, that would be public or common ground. This is a big reason why I think we should really have a block wall there. We, my wife and I have two horses, and this is my main concern. Being, the horse fence is right on the property line, and I'm afraid, you know, if there's only plantings there to keep the kids and the new residents out, I know kids are gonna wanna feed the horses and whatever. And it's, it's a huge liability, because I'm sure at least some of the people that move into that subdivision don't have a clue about horse behavior. And, you know, horses, a lot of times if kids go to feed them, they will bite, not intentionally, possible they could kick. It's just a huge liability. And like I say, the, the wall was recommended by the planning and zoning, and then the town council tabled it, and I really wish I would reconsider that. And again, I invite anybody that wants to come out and look at the situation, I'd appreciate it, I really would. I, you know, by looking at the map on the wall, you can appreciate the closeness of the whole road, the access road, and, you know, by planting more trees in that area from the public area, it's not gonna stop kids or dogs. In fact, I, you know, in my lifetime, I won't see those trees big enough to stop anybody. And again, like I say, I really feel it's important. I can't put a fence up on my own property, 'cause there's electric right away there, so that, that's out of the question. So I'm just asking if you please reconsider your, your vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Next.
Hi, my name is Jeff Champ, and I am the owner of the Farmers Insurance Agency in town here and have been for the last 27 years. Time flies when you're having fun. The other, about a month ago or so, I was driving down Highway 89, and it was one of the patriotic holidays, and the flags were out on the road. And as I drove down the road heading north, all of a sudden the flags stopped. And I drove down to Perkinsville Road, and I thought, you know, I wonder, I wonder what it would take to put flags all the way down the Perkinsville, Perkinsville Road. So I started talking to people, and with the help of the American Legion, I actually found out how much it would cost. And it's about $1,792 for the 32 flags poles and holders that would take the flags all the way to the Perkinsville Roundabout. My business, myself, I am willing to pay half of that. And I'm coming to the council to see if it's possible that the town is willing to pay the other half.
We can't comment.
Okay. And that's.
We will take it under advisement, and we'll have an answer for you the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla.
My name is Mitch Padilla, and Mayor and Town Council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you here for a couple minutes. I am running for Justice of the Peace for the Prescott Precinct, which begins north of Paulden and goes down to Skull Valley, touches Skull Valley, and then includes Prescott Valley. And one of the things for me personally and professionally is to understand communities and how communities operate, how the residents of communities interact, not only amongst themselves, but also with law enforcement. I had the pleasure on Saturday, this past Saturday, of having permission to do a ride-along with our police force, and I want to thank Chief Winn and Lieutenant Shawn, and most especially Officer Schaefer. He's the officer that I rode with, and I spent 5:00 PM till about 12:30 at night. He is absolutely a professional individual who, one, I felt very safe with, two, I felt like I was being educated as I was going out and about. Saw a lot of different things from his perspective that, as a regular citizen with no law enforcement background, that I would have never known. So community service is a very big thing for me personally and professionally, and I just want to thank the city for giving me that opportunity. I had a great time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Yes, sir, come right up. We'll get you in just a minute.
Mayor, Council Manager, thank you for allowing me to say a few words. Several years ago, we started the planning and design of the new small police range, Public Works and the Police Department. This range was deemed needed to help train, retrain some officers rather than tie up the main range. I'm very happy to say that late spring, we actually constructed this new pistol range underneath a team effort of police and Public Works. We pulled our five Public Works people off the roads, put them on a bulldozer, put them on a very large loader and the dump trucks that we had available, and we built the range in three days. And I want to congratulate your Public Works people and the police leadership for forming this team and getting the work done. Your people performed very well. In fact, they never even took a break except to eat a doughnut that I brought out each day. They did stop for that. But in three days' time, they built the range. I went back out a couple of weeks ago after your very heavy rain, just to make sure the water was all running downstream, it was. So thank you to your Public Works crew, your Public Works inspector, your Public Works manager, and police leadership for constructing this excellent new range for the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your assistance and coming and saying a few kind words about the folks you work with. We really appreciate your work for the town. Thank you. Okay, yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Robert Schoon, and I live at 1498 West Road, 4 North.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
Schoon, it's S-C-H-O-O-N, just like school, but.
It's like a spoon.
Not a spoon.
Not a spoon, okay, thanks.
And I, too, am also affected by the, the situation that Wayne discussed earlier. Again, I would just like you to reconsider and take a closer look at putting a six-foot wall between our property and that access driveway to the new J.C. Ranch project. Again, the concerns that Wayne has raised, I also am a little concerned if that becomes more of a, a walk path, because I believe you guys are requiring sidewalks throughout that subdivision. I believe that will incur more foot traffic, more dog walking. I have dogs that are on the property. I know, not necessarily all your concerns, but it does create more of just an access way. It creates a roadway next to our properties. So if you could, please reconsider, please come out, do a field trip, take a look at it. I greatly appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, come on up. That's a familiar face.
John Garden, G-A-R-D-E-N. Mayor Croft and Council, I'm just gonna give you, first off, another pat on the back. I know that you ran uncontested in the last run, and I think, I think, I think it was Councilman Lon Turner this week that was, that was on the front page of the paper. And for the last month or so, our local paper has ran an interview with most of you, and it's been really nice, because I, I think most of the community here doesn't know a lot about your backgrounds, and it gave us a better insight and, and a better look at, at you as individuals and what your beliefs are. And I can't speak for everybody in the town, but I, I get around, I speak to a lot of people, and it seems like, like you have the town's best interest at heart and the like-mindedness of the council that most people I talk to, we seem to enjoy, so I want to thank you very much for that. One other thing I wanted to bring up, I'm sure that the council knows about the big, the big Chino project. There were two town hall open meetings, June 27, end of the month, up at the Prescott Resort. One was at 1:00, the other one was at 6:00 PM. I was there before the first one, I stayed until 10:00 PM after the second one, talking with engineers about the project, trying to learn a little more about it than just what went on during the meetings, because each meeting was extremely different from the other. Our local rep, Noel Campbell, was there, which was refreshing and nice. He actually sat next to me, I know Noel, and, and we spoke, and he asked some really pertinent questions about the project. He also had some pretty interesting statistics. So the company, ITC, they have a website, they're trying to be as transparent as possible, according to them. It's updated pretty much daily. I'm sure Council knows about it. I did retrieve an extra brochure, unless someone on the council or all of you would like to take a look at it and look a little more into the project as, as it moves forward. Right now, it's, it's just in the infant stages. They still have one for sure, maybe two, open town hall meetings before the end of this year, if anybody's interested. That's about all I got. I just thought I'd leave one of these with her. And if you, either all or individuals like to take a look at it, maybe look into it further, find out a little bit more about it, 'cause actually, it's the Verde River, which I would say probably from maybe Norfolk all the way up into Phoenix probably supplies a large percentage of the water in this area of Arizona, so I'd appreciate it if you'd take a little more, a better look at it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Garden. No comment?
I can't.
No. Anyone else?
No affirmation.
Okay. Let's go on to current events, summaries, and reports. A response to the public, have no response to the public. Current events, summaries, and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events or ask a staff member to provide the same. Presentation and information requested by the mayor and council will be made and questions answered, no action will be taken. Do we have anything on this side? Yes, sir. No. This side?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a heads up, school's going back in session in a couple weeks, so be mindful of the school zones and our kids and the walkways. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
August 1st will be one of our birthday planning meetings. We are inviting the public to come and get involved. It will be at 6:00 PM at the Community Center over on 1 East. We have a vice mayor, a secretary, a vice chairman, a secretary, and now we have an editor for our book, and we're gonna be looking for pictures to display in the book. So if you have pictures, you wanna go ahead and come and get involved, we'd love to have you. Second thing I've got is tomorrow, the Upper Verde River Coalition will have a meeting in this room at 2:00, and the ITC will be making a presentation there if you're interested.
All right, I have something. YRM C Physicians Care is relocating to the CVMC Urgent Care Facility at 474 State Highway 89 on the corner of State Highway 89 and West Road 1 North. It will open for business on August 13 and will eventually house four primary care doctors and a nurse practitioner. So if you're interested in having a doctor here in Chino Valley, they are taking reservations right now at the current primary care facility on State Route 89. So we're finally gonna get some doctors here, these are primary family doctors, so to serve some of our citizens. Town manager.
I only have one thing to share with you, and I want to thank Councilmember Kelly. We have one more person on our Yellow Ribbon Honor Tree. It is Curtis Shelton, he is in the Marine Corps. He has been deployed as of July 2018 and is not expected to return until March of 2019, and he's in the Pacific. So, thank you for bringing that forward.
Great for him, thank you. We want to honor all our vets, if we can. Okay. Anybody, anybody else on your staff?
Jason Sanks, our Development Services Director is going to do a short update on the UDO rewriting the permits.
Mr. Sanks?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a brief PowerPoint, it always helps to see everything in numbers. All right, as you know, quarterly, we like to keep the council as well as the public updated on how we're doing over in the building, planning, and safety departments. Let me get the slideshow going here. And our intention is to kind of give you trending analysis on where we're going, where we've been. I can assure you, it's managed to stay quite busy. We've gotten some updated numbers as of today. You've probably, you may recall the slide from last time we did after the end of the first quarter. So what I've done is I've left fourth quarter, 2017, up. I left up first quarter, 2018, which were the last numbers you've seen, and then now quarter two, of course, of 2018. So if you look up at the top, now, mind you, when I show you the permit count numbers there, those are just the big permits. This is like big commercial permits or single-family homes. It doesn't all include manufactured homes that have been placed on lots, nor would it include the slew of permit types that we would get if someone needed an electrical permit or something small, like a tenant improvement for building. So, right now, for a town of our size, we continue to have a surprisingly high number of single-family residence permits. These are site-built homes. You can see back in quarter, fourth quarter, 2017, we had 37. We had a kind of a spike in the first quarter, again, of 51, and yet we still continue to run forward. We've had another 43 new home permits applied for in just the last three months, which is considerable, considering we only have 11,500 people, so. It doesn't sound like we're gonna have 11,500 people for very long at this rate. However, we are, I will advise you that builders are slowly running out of finished lots, and when I say finished lots, those are lots that are build-ready. We're finding that we're going to need new lots to continue building. Of course, I'm sure many in the public would like us to stop growing, but the growth pressures are there, the market is still pressing us. We are currently reviewing now construction documents for 62 new lots in a project called Colonial Villas. It kind of had a stop-start back at the end of the housing boom, you know, in 2008. It is back, it's a Mr. Fletcher property, and he's chomping at the bit to get those 62 lots ready to go. As well, we now have a Century, Century Ranch, which is north of Bright Star, I've mentioned it before. It is under, nearly under complete first review, and that's another, eventually gonna be about 172 one-acre lots, so at least of the large lots, larger, if you will, lots. They're under review now. Those are intended to be site-built homes when they, when they do come in. Almost last year. So it's, it is exciting news to see it, and as you know, what typically will happen in my experience with development trends is as these housing lots come on and these homes get built, we'll start to see the commercial permits start to take up as, commercial services will need to be built to serve as our residents. So you can see the revenues there. This does not really, fully reflect all of the revenues. We've got water and sewer fees and all of those other things, but this is, you know, permitting and plan review fees. So we're staying consistent, no big drop-off, although it's dropped off a little bit this quarter. Code compliance seems to be picking up. The rain is gonna help that as well, especially when it comes to weeds. So we've gone up in caseload. Here we are. Again, weeds have popped up to about 68%. Within the weeds category, it often ends up, we also end up sometimes with junk and garbage that get stuck in the weeds, so we get calls more or less for both of those items. Had some more calls, interesting calls on inoperable vehicles. I've probably seen some of the random fifth wheels standing on vacant lots along the 89 that don't belong there. We're working on it, I can't personally drag it off the lot myself, we're trying to get somebody to do that. And then the rest is 22% miscellaneous, it can be related to home occupation violations, maybe people making too much noise. It can be any number of things. So we have seen an uptick in that, but you may know we have actually interviews scheduled next, actually, no, it's tomorrow. I was thinking next week, but I bet it's tomorrow, for a, a second code compliance officer, and they're gonna focus on helping us keep up with the number of calls we're getting, and also to be more proactive than simply seem, you know, always reactive, waiting for the neighbors to complain. And they're gonna focus, as you know, on working on keeping our, our businesses along the 89 in compliance in a proactive and a collaborative manner. And we'll be rolling out that kind of initiative in the near term, too, so that we work with the local paper, we work with the, work with the chamber as well as others, so that, you know, we give a nice soft step approach out there to the business community that we really care about and help them come into compliance. Things like storing their inventory out in front of their store where they're not supposed to, and selling vehicles out of restaurant car lots and stuff like that, things that they're not supposed to be doing, so. But we want to help them along, so that's our, our next big initiative. So by the time you get your Q3 update, we hope to give you some progress on where we've gone with that, and of course, hopefully we continue to stay strong on the permitting activity, so. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Questions?
Did you say 172?
172? Well, that's a build-out, right now.
I was just curious, I didn't remember the exact number.
Well, so the way that we've understood is that the project, that Century Ranch will be phased, as you can imagine, building all that infrastructure, sometimes they'll do like the first 20 or 25 lots. That's the intent. The first phase is intended to be located off of Perkinsville Road on the south side. And then I believe the intent is to work its way south towards Bright Star.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, of course.
Thanks for the report. It's good, good news. Okay, let's go on to Consent Agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Do you want to remove anything?
No, sir.
You want to remove anything on this side?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Tom Kirk, would you read the Consent Agenda, please?
Yes, sir. Consideration and possible action to approve the Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, between the Town of Chino Valley and the Yavapai County Flood Control for fiscal year 2018 and 2019. Financial contribution for, from the district to the town for flood control improvements. B, consideration and possible action to approve the 2018 Town of Chino Valley Strategic Plan. C, consideration and possible action to adopt pension funding policy for the Town of Chino. for the Town of Chino Valley Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. D, consideration and possible action to approve the amended and restated agreement for professional consulting services between the Town of Chino Valley and Mark Holmes LLC for the purpose of providing professional water consultation in an amount not to exceed $39,500. E, consideration and possible action to approve the covenant and purpose and use by the Town of Chino Valley for the benefit of the United States Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration related to the Old Home Manor Industrial Park.
Is there a motion?
Got one more.
Yeah, one more.
Oh. We'll do this after the next one.
Consideration and possible action to accept the June 26, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
Now.
I make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda items.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Let's go on to Item 7, which is action items. The council may vote to recess the public meeting and hold an executive session at any item on this agenda pursuant to A.R.S. 3843103A3 for the purpose of discussion or consultation for their legal advice with the town attorney. Executive session are not open to the public, and no action can be taken during the executive session. So let's go to Item A, Mr. Sanks. It's called Withdrawal Request. Brooks Apartment Rezone of 6.85 Acres of Rural Property Generally Located Approximately 1,400 Feet West of State Road 89 and 620 Feet South of West Road 2 North at 740 West Road 1 North from M.R. 1 Multiple Family Residential One-Acre Minimum Zoning District to M.R. 1 PAD Multi-Family Residential One-Acre Minimum Zoning District with a planned area development overlay zoning district to modify the density development stated in the M.R. 1 zoning.
Mayor and Council, yes, thank you. We did want to make sure that it was clearly noted on the agenda that this item has been withdrawn at the request of the applicant. This was, I believe, late last week. At first, we weren't certain if they wanted to table the request for further consideration after making a number of changes, but they formally requested to withdraw. Both Alex and I have certainly tried to take the time, as you can tell, to let the neighbors know in advance so they didn't come and waste their evening. We don't have a presentation for you tonight because it's basically, the project is dead.
Okay, then we'll assume this no action is taken, and we will move on to the next item. Thank you. B, consideration and possible action to adopt ordinance number 18-851 rezoning 8.7 Acres of 15.8 Acres of Rural Property. Assessor Partial Number 30618013C located approximately .75 Miles East of the southeast corner of North Road 1 East and East Perkinsville Road at 1821 East Perkinsville Road from A.R. 5 Agriculture Residential Five-Acre Minimum to S.R. 1 Single Family Residential One-Acre Minimum. Applicant David and Candy Ruttering, Mr. Lerner.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before you have an item by Mr. and Mrs. Ruttering, they're requesting to rezone a portion of their lot. As you see here, the, the property is located at Buddy Perkinsville Road at 1821 East Perkinsville Road. The area is made up of residential, residential uses. As stated before, the zoning district is, is classified with a zoning district of agriculture residential five-acre minimum. It's about approximately 16 acres. It has a general plan land use designation of medium-density residential. Currently, the lot is being used for animal rescue, and they also sell hay on the lot. The applicant is requesting to rezone a portion of their lot, exactly 8.7 Acres of the 15.8 Acres from A.R. 5 to S.R. 1. As you see here in the zoning map, the request for the zone change is supported by properties to the north, to the south, and to the west. Once, if council decides to approve this request of the zone change, Mr. and Mrs. Ruttering are, are gonna pursue it forward to divide the lot into two with a, with that section of the S.R. 1 to develop single-family residential homes on it. The item, during the citizens' review process, the Rutterings had a neighborhood meeting here in Town Hall on June 27th. There were no attendees that attended that same meeting. Staff has not received any calls or any letters or any emails regarding this request for a zone change. And no issues have been brought up. The item went before Planning and Zoning Commission on July 3rd. The commissioners didn't really have any questions regarding this or any issues were brought up, and they forwarded a recommendation of approval to Town Council.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Town Council, staff, the staff in Planning and Zoning Comi, sorry, staff in Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending or, are recommending an approval of the request for a zone change from 8.7 Acres of the 15.8 Acres of the site from A.R. 5 to S.R. 1.
Thank you, Mr. Lerner. Do we have any questions on this side?
Can you back up one slide? You, we're listed, they're gonna continue the sale of hay? Is that appropriate for that zoning already?
Commissioner Mendoza, yes. By, because of the agriculture, in the A.R. 5 zoning district, the property owners can have agriculture uses for, for commercial purposes. Okay, and that's the reason they wanna leave 7.5 or 7.10 Acres in the A.R. 5 zoning district so they can continue with animal rescue and the sale of hay with that act status.
And also, they're, they're going to, they intend to subdivide the 8.7 acre side, correct?
Right, so, if, if town pursues forward to do, to approve the request, it's gonna stay as a blended zoning for, for a time until they decide to, to split the property. They're gonna split it specifically with the legal description that was submitted for that, that section or those 8.7 Acres are gonna become the S.R. 1 zoning district.
Is it, will there then be multiple splits to it? Because if they're splitting it once now, are they limiting themselves on other splits in the future?
Yes, Commissioner Mendoza.
And, and, I really don't need any answer. They're aware of...
Yes, they are. They are aware that they can only do, divide the property into three.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure they weren't going down a road that they weren't aware of, so, okay, great, thank you.
Councilperson Lane, did you have?
Nope. Councilmember Mendoza answered the question for me.
Okay, anybody else? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 18-851 to rezone 8.7 Acres of a 15.8 Acres Site from A.R. 5 to S.R. 1.
Second it.
Motion is second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Let's go on to Item C. Consideration and Possible Action to Approve a Conditional Use Permit, CUP 18005, to Allow Food Truck Court on C.L. Commercial Light Property, Zoned Property, 1.38 Acres of Rural Property. Assessor Partial Number 30623057 Located Approximately .25 Miles North of Northwest Corner of Center Street and State Route 89 Intersection at 246 North State Route 89. Owner Holding LLC. Applicant Bruce Eldrich, Mr. Sanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Apparently, it's gonna be the Alex Show tonight since I have had a request to postpone this item to your next regularly scheduled council meeting. So if you don't mind, in the absence of the applicant not being here to answer questions, we would probably like to defer the presentation on the food truck court to your next regularly scheduled meeting.
We have a request to postpone it to the next meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll second it.
I'll make a motion to postpone this item until our next...
Or motion, sorry. I'm kinda tardy today. Did you make a motion?
I made a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you.
Sorry, Mayor.
No problem. Okay, let's go on to Item D. Consideration and Possible Action to Approve a Conditional Use Permit, CUP 18005, to Allow Existing Single Family Residential Use Within the C.L. Commercial Light Zoning District for a .55 Acres of Rural Property. Assessor Partial Number 3062127B Located on the southwest corner of North Road 1 East and East Road 3 North at 8, 985 East Road 3 North. Applicant Nathan Peabody and Anna Hurtado, Mr. Lerner.
Mayor and Council, before you have an item, a request for a conditional use permit from Mr. Peabody and Mrs. Hurtado. They're requesting a conditional use permit in order to allow the existing single-family residents to be in conformance within the, within the commercial light zoning district. Subject property is on the southwest corner of East Road 3 North and North Road 1 East. The area is surrounded by single-family residents with Chino Valley Mobile Homes to the north and single-family residents to the north and the west. Site improvements on the property. There's a single-family residence, 1,734 Square Feet, and a detached garage, 196 Square Feet. Just a brief history of, of the site and why we're here. The existence, this, this existing single-family residence was developed in 2000, in the, in the year 2000. Originally, the site was, was two acres. And December of 15, 2005, the property owner at the time recorded a lot split that made the lot smaller. He divided the lot into two 1.20-acre lots. And April 27, 2006, the applicant, or the property owner at the time, went before council and got approval of a, of a zone change from what was a single-family residential one-acre minimum to a commercial light zoning district. At that point, the single-family residents on site became a legal, a legal nonconforming use. Based on the legal nonconforming use status of the, of the single-family residents, based on the code, legal, legal nonconforming use cannot be expanded, and that limits the property owners to keep the property as is right now. When the applicant came before us, there were several options that we gave them. One of them was to apply for a conditional use permit, and the other one, the other route they could go is to rezone the property. Our staff believes that by them allowing, by them applying for a conditional use permit is the best way to go. If they were requesting a, a zone change for a single-family residence, that would require them to also do a general plan amendment. This, this area is a, has a land use designation of commercial slash multifamily. So, our staff believes that the conditional use permit is the best way to go, that will allow them to have the single-family, single-family residential use in conformance. This is a site plan that the applicant submitted. As you see here, it's only showing the single-family residents in a detached garage. The staff notified the property owners within a 300-foot radius. Only one property owner came and spoke to staff. He was concerned about the, if the, if the property owners were gonna have a, a commercial use on site. Our staff assured him that, that based on the, on the information that we received from the applicant, that the single-family residents would stay, and they would stay as a single-family residence. That's not to say that it will be converted into commercial in the future because the commercial light zoning district does allow them to have some types of commercial uses on it. They had a neighborhood meeting on July 3rd. Here in the town chambers, there was no attendees that attended said meeting. The, the item was presented before Planning and Zoning Commission. During said presentation, the commissioners wanted some clarification on exactly what legal nonconforming meant. Our staff was able to clarify that. Commissioners and forwarded a recommendation of approval. The applicant is here. If the mayor and council have any questions for them or for myself.
Do we have questions on this side?
No.
Jack?
No, sir.
This side?
No.
Yes, sir.
I got one question. I drive that route when I'm on the bus quite frequently, and that house is for sale. Now, is that CUP gonna affect the house sale? Or is it gonna go ahead and, will, when a property changes hands, will it go back to commercial?
No, well, the conditional use permit is, the conditional use permit is attached to the property, to the property owners. Does that answer the question?
I mean, when, I was just wondering when the property changed hands.
Right.
Because it's a for-sale sign out in front of it.
Right, the, the conditional use permit will remain with the property.
All right.
Just to clarify, the, the reason they're applying for the conditional use permit is because right now with the legal nonconforming status, it doesn't allow them to expand. And if, in the, in the future, if they wanted to add an additional room or an accessory structure, they're not gonna be able to do that because based on the code, it doesn't allow them to expand on the legal nonconforming use.
Yeah, no, I, I was just wondering when you change property owners.
Yeah. The conditional use permit will, will remain on the property, so that's...
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Now I have a question.
No? Anybody else on this side? Okay, may I have a motion?
Yes, sir. To approve a conditional use permit, CUP 18-005 for APN 30620127B to allow the existing single-family resident use within the C.L. Commercial Light Zoning District.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank, thank you, Mr. Lerner. Let's go on to E. Consideration and Possible Action to Award a Construction Contract to Sunland Asphalt in Amount Not to Exceed $375,579.41 for the Road 1 East Construction Project. Mr. Mayberry.
Hi, Mayor and Council. This is a proposal to use a cooperative contract through Buckeye, Arizona, and hire Sunland Asphalt to finish out Road 1 East that we've been working on for quite a while. What we did, a little bit of research, we were, the attempt was to use that pile of millings behind Gabby's Diner and actually recycle that pavement and put it down with a paver. And, and our research for doing that's where we contacted Sunland through that contract with Buckeye, and they did some research, and it was actually cost-prohibitive to, to fully recycle that pavement. So we're gonna try and save a couple hundred thousand dollars and just crush those millings into what equates to really good road base and lay those down, have Sunland lay those down, and top it with, with a double chip seal surface. So it's, it's not ideal, but for the cost involved, I think it's the best way to go. And you'll get a, a pretty good road. We'll wind up with seven or eight inches of base material on that road, so it should be fairly stout for any highway traffic that might occasionally get onto it if the highway's blocked for some reason. And that in cooperation with the low-water crossing contract that APNS is gonna start pretty soon. We'll finish out that road.
When do you think it'll be completed?
Uh, we're hoping to complete by mid-September on this. We're, we're running against weather if we go any longer than that. So that's really the, the guiding factor at this point. Trying to get those chips down before it gets too cold.
Okay, questions on this side?
Uh, this should wrap up our requirements from ADOD as well, correct?
Correct.
Great.
Questions on this side? Motion, please. Motion, please.
Award contract to Sunland Asphalt in the amount not to exceed $375,579.41 for the Road 1 East Construction Project.
Second it.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Next.
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor?
You don't have an executive session?
No executive session.
All right.
All in favor, say aye.
I second that motion.
Second, we have motion in three seconds, and we are adjourned.
All right.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Night, everyone.
Good night.